Right on time.
That's not bad. You heard that before?
What's that? Right, so, I'm all right. Good, good. All right, 7 o'clock. All my people ready? Ready? All right, we'll go ahead and call the Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Ms. Branch, can we call the roll please? Here.
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 Here. Who's next?
I guess the planning commission can go next. Here.
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 Here. And welcome, Mr. Slitter. Good to have you in.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah.
Mr. Longest? Mr. Rose? Mr. Holder? Mr. Pearson? Mr. Branch?
Okay. Review and adoption of the meeting agenda. We do have an amended agenda for the board. If there are no other changes, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda we have in front of us. So, motion seconded, any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Mr. Hodgins?
Hi.
Mr. Gardner?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Hi. Hi. All right, I don't think you guys need to take the simple action step. Let's just right into the business of the night presentations. First up is All Points Broadband. Mr. Carr, I see on our meeting here, we can get him unmuted. Once he is, he is welcome to begin.
So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
And do we have the, do you all have the presentation that I sent to the clerk this afternoon?
Can y'all hear it in back? I didn't think so. I don't think he can. I don't want to play it.
We'll see, we'll adjust as needed.
Share the screen.
More than 84, I guess.
Great, so maybe I'll speak a little louder, is this okay?
I think we got you on our end now, Jimmy, you're good.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be back before you tonight to talk about the considerable and ongoing progress that we've been making in the last nine months since we began working together. Let's go to the next slide. So, I'm going to cover a couple of issues tonight. First, I want to talk about where we've been and where we're going. Remind everyone some of the details about the first phase of this project, which will be going to construction early next year, and then talk about the plan and the next steps we have to finish the job and connect the remaining unserved locations in the county. Next slide. So, as board members will recall, we commenced the partnership between All Points and the county about nine months ago. We began our work by doing a detailed review of your unserved areas. We've cataloged those, they're available on the website. We've sent out a number of surveys to make sure that we've identified all the currently unserved locations. We then promptly, because the timing made a lot of sense, were in a position to develop a preliminary network for certain areas of the county. And we began applying for relevant state and federal grant and other support mechanisms for that. In November of last year, the county, All Points and Dominion Energy Virginia, entered into an agreement to begin deploying fiber to the home in the county through the legislative framework we have in Virginia called the Middle Mile Statute. In the, in November and December of last year, we began seeking some federal funding through a program known as ARDOF. We were subject to what the Federal Communications Commission calls a quiet period during the pendency of an auction. That auction period concluded, the quiet period concluded in February, and at that point, we were able to announce that we'd received $1.5 million in federal funding that would enable us to begin construction of the first phase of the project. Let's go to the next slide. As a reminder, Phase One is an initial deployment. It's mostly the eastern half of the county. It's, we think of it as a beachhead, so that we've got a core network and infrastructure in place on which we can expand. This first phase of the county contains approximately 900 currently unserved locations. In this part of the project area, it will involve the deployment of about 60 miles of fiber optic infrastructure. You can see the summary routes there in red. And as I mentioned earlier, we've designed this network, everything that we're doing here, so that it will be readily scalable to be expanded. Next slide. So, continuing on the path of where we've been, so in March of this year, All Points, Dominion Energy Virginia, and the Pamukka Tribe entered into an agreement to further expand this initiative onto the Pamukka Reservation. In May of this year, we began high-level design for the remaining unserved areas of King William that are outside of Phase One. In June of this year, so just last month, we were honored and thrilled that the Rapahannic Electric Cooperative has joined our effort between the county, All Points, Dominion, the Pamukka Tribe, and now also REC. Also, last month, we began working with REC and Dominion to plan our fiber-to-the-home network for the rest of the county in a way that will leverage the fiber utility network that Rapahannic Electric Cooperative is building on their own, and also take advantage of additional assistance where Dominion can provide it. We started, earlier this month, we began preparing the details of an application on behalf of the county that would be submitted to the BODY program. That's the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative. It's the, it's the state-level grant funding program for broadband. We are planning to return at your August 23 Board of Supervisors meeting, at which point we'll have the more detailed design overview for expanding the project into the rest of the county and all the remaining areas that are unserved. If they stick to this schedule, we expect that the great VADI grant award announcements for the current cycle will be made in December, so it's a pretty quick turn. The applications will go in in September, and the decisions will be announced in December. And then in the first quarter of next year, we're going to begin pre-construction activities, and people will start to see us deploying fiber in the Phase One area of the county. That's that eastern section I've showed you. Next slide. So, in terms of where we are now, this is kind of an interim update before we come back in August with the more detailed presentation on the grant application for the rest of the county. But we are working very closely with our electric utility partners and county staff to design a fiber-to-the-home network for the remaining unserved areas of the county, and that will be the subject of an upcoming application to the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative. At All Points, we're very familiar with the VADI program, and so we'll be designing that network, if we are designing that network, so that it is a highly competitive application. We feel very confident about the direction that that's going. And importantly, a question we receive a lot is whether or not we're designing the network to be compliant with the American Rescue Plan Act requirements, which we are. So, this network will offer well in excess of 100 megabits per second speeds. We're actually designing what's known as an XGS PON network. So, initially, we'd be able to offer one gigabit to the home. That's a 100% fiber optic connection, and the network will be readily scalable in the future so that it can be upgraded to be able to offer 10 gigabits per second to the home symmetrical, so a very future-proof, high-quality network. As I mentioned, we are in the process of working with our electric utility partners and other stakeholders to finalize the network design. We plan to come back before the board at its August 23 meeting to present our recommendation for the grant and the application and related matters. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions that members of the board have.
Mr. Carr had more, and of course, a question. When you come back in August, if there's anything that you can offer in terms of accelerating the schedule, if that's labor upfront, more dollars thrown upfront, et cetera, would be interested to hear, especially in lieu of the, the funding that's coming out of Washington these days, anything that we can grab and maybe throw at it to help accelerate this project would be appreciated.
Yes, so, you know, we're monitoring everything. There's a lot of talk in Washington today about an infrastructure bill. With the state, the Commonwealth of Virginia has indicated that when the General Assembly returns for a special session in early August, that at that point, the General Assembly will determine what portion of the state's share of the American Rescue Plan Act will be allocated to broadband. No official announcements have been made about that, but the governor and prominent members of the relevant committees and the General Assembly from both parties have both indicated that broadband will be a significant priority for the state share of the ARP funding. The Department of Housing and Community Development, which administers that program, has indicated that whatever their intention is, subject to the General Assembly's approval, of course, but the intention of the administration and the Department of Housing and Community Development is to whatever portion of the additional federal monies that the state allocates to broadband would be run through the existing VADI program. And, and so there would be what they're calling a one-stop window for applying for that grant funding, if you believe what has been suggested in the press. We were at a groundbreaking event for the Northern Neck Fiber-to-the-Home Project late last week. The governor suggested that he was going to make a significant proposal with respect to state investment in broadband. A senior member of the legislature from the other party suggested that that should be a minimum of $1 billion. Obviously, we don't know what the amount will end up being, but that's something we're closely monitoring, and we're going to be in a position, hopefully, if the General Assembly has acted, to know what that dollar amount is before we finalize the details of the grant application with your county. And we really, we have been encouraged, and I know, Ed, you've been on a number of those meetings, the webinars that the, that the state has had. They have been encouraging providers and their public sector partners to think big and submit proposals that will achieve universal broadband in the relevant jurisdiction, and that is the direction that, that we're taking for the design of the rest of the county. King William is in a much better shape in terms of having shovel-ready projects and being ready to go, I think, than a lot of other counties, because you all began this process earlier, and we've already got design complete for Phase One. The, the most important issue that we see right now is the global supply chain for fiber and for related construction materials, so conduit, sheath. There's a significant amount of money, new money, coming into those markets, both through the recent federal proceedings and also now the ARP allocation, which is causing a lot of states and localities to begin planning and making investments in fiber optic broadband. And we are seeing that across the supply chain in terms of lead times and prices. And so, our plan would be that if the county approves the VADI grant application that we present to you in August, we're confident enough in the plan that we have and its competitiveness for the VADI program that we would go ahead and begin procuring materials so that we don't have any delay between construction of Phase One and beginning of construction of Phase Two in the county.
Sounds good, thank you.
Mr. Carr, we've seen panel with EDA. Phase One, you say we'll begin in the first quarter of next year, that's construction and the general, actually start construction, is that how I understand that?
Yes, so we would begin construction activities in the first quarter of next year. It will take longer than that to build the network, but that, the track that we're on right now is to begin construction in the first quarter of next year.
Okay, they say 900 people from Phase One. Is that a count of people who responded, if you're saying they want service?
No, that is the number of presently unserved locations that are within the geographic area covered by that project. And so, I think that's probably going to equate to something on the order of 2,100 currently unserved end users. You've got about two and a half people per household, so 900 locations and a little over 2,000 people.
Okay, so that's going back to, at the beginning, you said you will serve everybody. You're designing to serve everybody. And that's what that 900 number represents? Households in Phase One?
Yes, so that we, Phase One is designed to offer service to 100% of the currently unserved locations in that segment of the county.
Okay, and Phase Two, is the rest of the county, or is, or is Phase Three, are we enough?
Phase Two, so our recommendation is going to be to, as the state has encouraged, localities and providers is to think big, and so we're designing a, one more phase, just Phase Two, that would extend service to 100% of the remaining unserved locations in the county. Now, to the extent there, that, you know, if there's a known build plan or someone has an obligation to deploy fiber to the home or cable service, you know, we wouldn't propose to overbuild that, but we would, we've identified all the locations that are not planned to be served, and those are the locations where we're designing the network to.
At Phase Two, how many households is that? You got to handle on that? The rest of the county, I'm trying to say.
Yeah, it's going to be it's going to be more than another about 1,400 locations, I think.
Okay, totally 1,400, okay.
Gene, that doesn't count the Atlantic broadband customer base now. That's, that's without Atlantic broadband.
Right, yes, we're not, we're not overbuilding. Our project is about getting service to those who do not have it today.
Satellite fixed wireless does not count in this project.
Mr. Carr, this is Kenny Holdredite from the EDA. Can you hear me?
Yes, again.
All right, thank you. I know when we started this project with EDA, with you, we were also analyzing the best way to get internet. So, throughout your study, and maybe I missed this in previous presentations, we're looking at fixed wireless being what you believe in your team throughout your study to be the best. Is, is a WISP or the wireless internet, is that at all a niche or could be used in the county, or you believe continuing to go forward, the fixed wireless is the best course to hook everybody up?
So, we're not proposing fixed wireless, we're proposing fiber to the home.
Sorry, yes, fiber to the home, sorry.
Yeah, and that's, we believe for the county that that's a superior technology, it's a superior technology anywhere, but with the topography and the terrain and the vegetation, fixed wire, fiber to the home is, is going to be the superior technology. And it's also what, what the grant makers are encouraging providers to deploy. We think it's really a once-in-a-generation opportunity to get the highest quality broadband possible to everyone who doesn't have it today, and that's fiber to the home universally throughout the county. The, you know, one, one consequence of COVID-19 has been that at both the state and the federal level, policymakers have realized the imperative of getting unlimited high-quality broadband to everyone who does not have it today, and, and so there's a narrow window here where we, we in King William County have the opportunity to go after fiber to the home everywhere, and we think that that's an opportunity that, that we should take advantage of together.
Thank you for that update.
Mr. Carr, I have a question. Are you guys deploying this via utility poles or underground, or is it a mixture of both? And I actually have two questions, sorry. The other question is, how, how do you know, like, if you're a customer, how do you know that you're, you're going to be covered, like, that you guys did the research in order to make sure that I'm going to get my fiber optic cable?
Yeah, great question. The network is going to be primarily aerial construction, so that's fiber on utility poles. There are some areas where there are either no poles or for whatever other reason, an underground deployment makes more sense, but the, the network is overwhelmingly aerial. It's faster and less expensive to deploy. In terms of whether a location is included and in what phase, so residents can go to fiber allpointsbroadband.com, and they can enter their address, they can drag a pin onto their actual location that helps us measure drop length. And I believe right now it will indicate whether or not someone is in Phase One. Once we complete the network design, we will update that map, we'll share it publicly and encourage residents and businesses to go there and confirm that their location is in Phase One or Phase Two. And they will also be able to preregister for service, meaning that you can register your location with us and give us permission to contact you a couple of months in advance of building in front of your location so that we can sign you up and do your install and your drop construction during the overall construction process, which is faster for the consumer and more efficient for us in terms of construction.
Thank you, I have one more follow-up to that. If, if you all are doing overhead utility, and let's say I have a 100-acre farm, and I would rather it be underground, is there going to be an option for the consumer to be able to do that? And also, since you're saying this is a once-in-a-generation, or once, you know, once-in-a-decade opportunity, and you guys are going above ground, who is King William footing the bill, or are you guys footing the bill when, you know, trees fall and the service is disrupted? And, you know, how does that work?
No, so, All Points will be responsible for the maintenance and operation of the network. And so, the county does not, would not have any ongoing obligation, you know, towards maintenance. In terms of, the standard installation would include an aerial drop, so the fiber would come across your property on poles, and, but if a consumer has a preference about the drop, for example, we, you know, bury it, or can you put it over there so it doesn't go through the crepe myrtles, whatever, what have you, then the consumer will have the opportunity to elect, you know, a discretionary drop, you know? And they would pay the incremental cost for that, that request.
Okay. All right, Mr. Carr, thank you very much. We appreciate the update. We're, I think, we're all very happy with how this is going, how it's coming along. You know, we look forward to taking advantage of every opportunity that we have coming this way over the course of the next, next few months to get, get a plan in place to get everybody that currently does not have it good internet service. And this is what we, what we signed on with you guys to do, and I think so far, I'd say we were very pleased with the progress, so thank you very much.
Well, well, we've got a plan, now we're executing it, but, but we've enjoyed working with you all very much, and I think the considerable progress that we've been making is going to be continued, and we're in for a very good second half of the year here.
Great. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks. Item 4B, Blueprint 2041, Economic and Demographic Trends. We have Hill Studio with us tonight. Good evening.
All right, thank you. My name is Aaron Arnett, and I am with the Hill Studio team, and what we're going to share with you tonight is, first, I'm going to share with you the market research, and then we're going to talk about the survey, give you an overview of that, talk about the vision and the goals that have been developed as part of the plan, and then finally go over really what we're going to do this week and next step. So, with that, we will jump right into it. So, for this market assessment, again, this is a, this is a comp plan level market assessment, so we're really looking at a lot of different things. We, we're doing a demographic study, we've done market segmentation. That one is an interesting analysis, which we don't have time for me to really share with you tonight, but it's, it basically takes the demographics to a next level and kind of describes the characteristics of the people in the community and what they do in terms of consumer patterns and activities and all of that. So, I mentioned that now because I'm really not going to have an opportunity to share with you the, the full research there. We've done a residential assessment, we've done employment snapshot, we've done a commercial and retail market analysis, and then I'm going to share highlights of all of these with you, and for each one, of course, I'm going to go over our general observations. So, so first demographics. Your 2019 population, according to the census, is just over 17,000. That is the most up-to-date number that the census has provided. All of the other data that we're sharing with you here is the census ACS data, which is five-year estimates. And I say that to say that there's, we're using the most up-to-date data that we can, but we're also looking at, understanding that the Census Bureau is going to be releasing new data, hopefully during this plan. We're going to plug and play that right in, but with the demographic data I'm sharing with you right now, with the exception of that one number, which is the most up-to-date population figure, everything else is that, that five-year ACS. So, what we've done is we've compared King William County to the entire region, which includes certainly the Richmond metro area, as well as your adjacent counties and communities. And if you look at growth since 2010, King William County is growing at a healthy rate. It's grown at 7.6 during that time, which is tracking pretty much along the same line and trajectory as the metro, which is about 8.8% during that time. Healthy growth. New Kent County is a bit of an outlier in the region, but for all intents and purposes, you can see that King William is, is growing at a rate similar to the region. That growth is expected to continue. The Weldon Cooper Center has projected that in, by 2040, you all will break that 20,000 person population number. Now, I will tell you this, I think that is a very conservative number. I think you're going to hit it before then. If we look at the sheer number of residential building permits that you've had over the last few years, you're going to, you're going to, you're going to hit that mark before 2040. So, and I'm going to, I'm going to share with you some of those figures there again. here later. So next we looked at other demographic indicators. Race and ethnicity. About 77% white, 16% black. You are, you do have about 1% of your population is Native American. I mean, that's, you know, given our understanding of the county and what you all know about this county, that makes a lot of sense. We, we never really see that. But of course you've got the three tribes here in the community, and that's certainly a, a part of your, your population. When we look at age, you're older than the metro region. And that stands to reason because the metro always is going to be a little bit younger than the outlined counties. But you're, you're a little bit younger than most of the other counties that, that surrounds you. And I think another interesting indicator is, you know, even though you might be a little bit older than the metro, over a quarter of your population is under the age of 20. So I think that says something. It might be, you, you maybe have population moving here because you're an affordable place to live. People that are commuting to the, the larger metro areas that surrounds you. And, you know, they, they bring with them their, their young families. And, and, and we'll see that when we look at commuting patterns a little bit later as well. Next, income and education. Just a couple of things I want to point out here. The median household income, you can see the chart that compares you all to the larger region there in the middle. In 2019 ACS, you all were at about 67,000 median household income compared to the larger region. You're right there in the middle as far as that's concerned. Your education rates are, are, are very positive. 92% of the population is a high school graduate or, or higher education. And then, let's see. The, at least 20, I think it's 21% has a bachelor degree or higher. So those are all good figures as well. So next we looked at housing in the residential market. So as you might imagine, the vast majority of your housing stock is underoccupied. It is also predominantly single-family detached. So when you think about single-family homes, when you think about some divisions, some of the growth, that's the type of housing that you have here in the community. And you can certainly see that here. You've got very limited multifamily in the county. Again, that's not something that's uncommon in rural counties. I know that there's a, a couple of multifamily developments in the central garage areas and then a couple or a few down in the West Point area. But there's not a whole lot of that here in the county right now. So again, predominantly owner-occupied housing and predominantly single-family detached. Your housing stock, the 35% of it has been built since 2000. And median year is 1992. This really reflects, if you looked at our population growth and, and that, you know, that, that trend line, this really matches that. I do think that, that this number is going to change because you all are getting increasing numbers of residential homes being built in the community. And again, we'll show that here in a second. When we compare your, the value of owner-occupied housing that you have within the area. Again, that's the upper right chart. You can see that in 2019, King William County was about 2,000, 200, 204,000 median value of under occupied housing. You're sort of towards the, the lower end of the county as far as that's concerned. The interesting thing here is, is when you look at the distribution of the, the housing that you have in the area. 36% of your housing is between 200 to 300,000 in value. If you look at 150,000 to 300,000 in value, that represents about 63% of all the housing that you have within the county. So basically what that says is you're an affordable place to live. You definitely have that, that, that middle housing level here within the county. There's not a whole lot of housing above 300,000. And there's not a significant amount of housing under 150,000. So those would be the gaps that you have in the area. Now if we look at the, the market itself, Zillow and the multiple listing service from the Realtors Association are two great indicators to see kind of in live view what's happening in your market. And we talked about how the median home values were kind of at the lower end of, of the region. You all have been increasing significantly in values since 2012. So again, this is the Zillow number and this is of housing value. And this is median sales price according to the multiple, multiple listing service. So you can see that the residential market is improving significantly in terms of home values. And that's a really good indicator here in the community. The, the county supplied us with your residential building permits over the last eight or nine years or so. And this is something that's interesting too, because you may think with conventional wisdom that given the fact that we've been in a pandemic, that there might be a slowdown in investment. And that is not the case at all. In 2020, there were 154 residential, single-family home building permits for about $24 million in value. Both of those numbers were higher than the previous seven years. If you look at 2021, obviously it's a partial year. But you're on track to meet the 2020 numbers, particularly in the number, the sheer number of building permits. And, you know, you'll probably fall maybe a little bit short in terms of value. But the point here of the, this slide is that, again, there has been no slowdown. There has been no hit because of, of the pandemic in terms of residential investment in the county. How, excuse me, housing affordability, that's another indicator that, that we looked at here. So basically, when we talk about housing affordability, if you are spending greater than 30% of your income on housing, so that would be your mortgage payment, your rent, plus your utilities and all of that. If you're spending more than 30% of your income on housing, you're considered to be cost burdened. And so what we see here is that in the county that you have 23% of your renters are considered to be cost burdened. And 24% of your homeowners are, are also considered to be cost burden, burden. In our recent work in other similar rural counties, both of these numbers are low. They're lower than what we typically have seen. However, I haven't, I haven't seen homeowners cost burden figure actually be a little bit higher than renters. Now granted, there's not a whole lot of renters here in the county. So it's a small number that this, this data is being used to, to, to assess. But who knows? I mean, that, that may just fall within a margin of error there. But the point of this is, is we have to, when we're thinking about the comprehensive plan, we're thinking about the future, we're thinking about the growth in the county. We have to understand and appreciate and plan for the affordability of housing in the community as well. Yes. Right. And again, that's, um, that's not uncommon in rural counties. In fact, I, I looked earlier today in, in a recent community that we did a rural county outside of a metro area in North Carolina, and the number was over 30%. So, you know, I, I think that, again, you're an affordable place to live. But we also have to keep in mind that housing affordability, because we want to provide housing for all of our residents in its affordable manner.
Right. And, and a distinction between a term you threw there, because it doesn't mean they're over-leveraged necessarily. I don't think we're measuring whether or not they are, you know, underwater, but they are.
Is the, what, yeah, I mean.
Right, right. Well, he said over-leveraged, and I don't think that's necessarily an accurate way to describe that number.
I mean, I think that's a fair way to describe it. So, you know, I wouldn't be too concerned about these numbers, other than we just need to be aware of them. That's a good question. And let me dig into the data a little bit more to see if I can figure out a little bit more granular detail of that. That's a great question. I will, I will dig more deeply into that for sure. So employment, we did a snapshot of the current employment in the county. This is census data from, again, this is the most up-to-date census data that we can get. So it's from 2018, obviously pre-pandemic from US Census on the map. And a couple of things that are interesting here is you have approximately 4,000 jobs or so, give or take, within the county. That's not a lot of jobs, but of course you're a small county, you're a rural county. So you, you can see that even, even today, the, the majority, well, the largest segment of your employment is in manufacturing. Again, I know this is not anything that you're not aware of. But 18% of the jobs are manufacturing. Next is educational services, which you also often see a lot in a, in a county when you look at county jobs, as well as retail trade. Those are the next two along those lines. One of the things that's also interesting is when we look at commuting patterns, patterns. King William is definitely a net exporter of jobs. I mentioned there's about 4,000 jobs or so within, within the county itself, whether that be people who live in the county or people that come into the county. But there's about close to 9,000 jobs, people who live within the county and have jobs. There's close to about 9,000 of those. And I believe it's 87% of people who live within King William County and have employment commute outside of the county. 87.5% to, to be exact. It's not, again, uncommon to see those numbers where a rural county, particularly when you're so close to the metropolitan area, where you have that export of jobs and those commuting patterns. However, that number is a little bit higher than, than what we, we typically see. By the same token, you have close to 3,000 people that are coming into the county to work every single day.
Do we have a, a number of retired, non-working individuals in the county?
I'm, I'm certain that that is the case and, and I can, I can check that number as well.
And do you have any way of knowing the people that commute out of the county, what types of jobs they are going into, manufacturing, retail, et cetera?
I'm not sure about that right now, but I can tell you where they're going. The, within, I mean, and again, you, you all know this, most of the jobs that you have within the county are, are down towards, are over towards West Point. But when you were talking about commuting outside of the county, Mechanicsville is where most people are going, followed closely by Richmond. And then, and you can see this particular lower-left little circle chart that you have there. That's basically the direction that people are going. So people are going to the, the Northwest, Mechanicsville and Richmond. And you can see the other places where they're going. We can, we can take that definitely into a more granular detail as well. I don't know that if we, that we can figure out exactly what types of jobs that the people that are commuting outside the county are, are, are going, or, you know, have. But let me check on that because we may very well be able to do that. I don't think so just yet. That's a great question because number one, these numbers are 2018 numbers. And unfortunately, we, we don't, you know, this does not reflect that. But we do know national trends, particularly in areas that have great infrastructure like high-speed internet and broadband, like we've just been talking about, are seeing more people having the ability to work from home. But also small rural communities that are outside of metro areas that have a great quality of life are a desirable place for people to go. I mean, I've got a small company of six people. I could work anywhere. I could easily work here in King William County. All I have to do is have high-speed internet and, and that's it. So that's a great question. There, there absolutely are trends suggesting that, that, that that's happening in our rural communities. But these data right here do not necessarily account for that. I do think that the, the county business pattern profiles that will come out next year, hopefully will show some of those trends on a more local level. Unemployment, virtually every community I've worked in over the past year has shown this exact same heartbeat in our unemployment figures. And you can see this is Virginia, King William County and the, the MSA the last couple of years during the pandemic and then really over the last 20 years. But essentially what you see here is that unemployment rate jumped in March and April of last year. I think your highest rate was about 9.8% in April of last year. But now it's currently 3.4%. And actually this was April, so there's, there's, I can update those figures. But the point of this is, is you're almost back to pre-pandemic levels with unemployment rates. And that's a real positive indicator here in the community. It shows that you all are, are bouncing back for sure as far as that's concerned. And then finally, I think it's the final set of slide anyway, is the commercial market, the retail market. There's a number of different things that we've looked at, but the main analysis that we've done here is what's called a retail leakage analysis. And you're probably familiar with, with that terminology. But just in case, basically what it does is it looks at a geography, in this case, King William County. And it compares what stores that exist within King William County sell on an annual basis to what consumers who live in King William County purchase on an annual basis. So if consumers are purchasing more than the stores are selling, that means dollars are leaking. They're going outside of the county because mainly that particular good or service isn't located in the county. And, and, and that translates directly to demand when there is leakage. Now, not every community has leakage. In fact, I'm going to share with you a couple of numbers that, that'll probably make sense to you here in a second when we look at some of your micro-markets here. But certainly King William County is, is leaking. Stores sold 185 million last year. These are previous year numbers. Consumers who live in the county spent about 356. So you're leaking 100, or at least in the last year, you leaked almost $171 million going outside the county, again, because that good or service isn't located here. That does translate directly to demand.
That would include Amazon, there was like.
It absolutely does account for online sales like, like Amazon. It's a great question. Both great observations. And again, I think with the, with the, the cost burden scenario that we were talking about before, if, if we compare you all to other similar rural communities, it's not a doom and gloom number. But I'm glad to hear that it's something that, that you're interested in because it is an important number. But you're right as well on the stickiness of those dollars. And, and here's a case, one thing that's interesting too, is your county is a unique, long county. And the, the, the market differs in various parts of the county. For example, if you live in the central garage area, you can commute to Mechanicsville and Richmond in a really short amount of time. You know, perhaps you're coming home and, you know, on your way home, you stop at the grocery store in Mechanicsville on the way home. It's easy to do that. We see that type of commerce happening when you do have those commuting patterns like we're talking about here. we're talking about here. But for all intents and purposes, there's demand here within the county for certain types of retail, and I'm going to go into a little bit more detail about this. The biggest opportunities happen to be with automobile dealers, I mentioned this earlier today with our steering committee, auto dealers is not really something that I think is going to be a huge opportunity for you all to recapture in the community. Auto dealers are a destination-type business, there's demand, and there could be an opportunity for that type of business to locate here, but those types of businesses are generally going to be located near each other, and they're probably going to locate more in, in a metropolitan area. But other real opportunities, I think, are with general merchandising, with restaurants, with grocery, with home centers, although I, I'll share a little bit about that with my last slide, that, that opportunity may not be as much as, as this figure shows us. Clothing, health and personal care. I'm going to go into these, and each one of these in a little bit more detail here in a second.
We don't have the, the, for second to this. So like, if the things are listed there, when I think from economic benefit, like a grocery store, that's a big 112 million bucks, right? But grocery stores don't generate a lot of cash, right? I mean, they're low rent, they're cheap, they're box, I mean, oil, right? But it's a 240, but from net aspect, some of those things over there, they still generate a lot of cash, right?
I, I mean, again, I think that's a, 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 a good question here. You're right, I think certain categories would, would generate more income, but by the same token, some of these categories are things that the, the consumers need to have a healthy quality of life as well. But also, but also, there may be things that you see on this, this chart right here that there's a significant amount of demand for, that you think, you know what, we don't want that here on county. We, we're, we're okay with driving to Mechanicsville for that, or if we live in the, the western, eastern part of the county, going over to Williamsburg for that particular good or service. So I think when we look at these figures, with both of your points that you've just mentioned, we know that there's demand, we know that there's opportunity. What is the right opportunity for us? And those categories, those types of businesses are the ones that we want to target and, and try to get to locate here in the community.
It looks like, Dave, that, that was the app right there, is, a- after automobile dealers, the next several of those are arguably convenience-type of eyes. So that really reflects that 9,000 commute, and if we can keep those people working in the county, then those numbers should go down significantly, correct?
Likely so. I also think too, that when we consider growth, I think that these numbers, the demand is going to, to continue to grow up, go up. If, if we're able to keep those employees within the county, instead of going up like this, it may go up like that, but it's going to continue to increase, in my opinion. And a lot of, that has everything to do with the population projections that we were talking about before. So we also look at the, there's, there's a lot more to this piece of the puzzle that, that, that we'll share in, in, in the final report and the final strategies. But we can't just look at the, the boundaries of King William County in a vacuum. The, the consumer, the, the market doesn't observe, you know, political boundaries. They'll observe geographic boundaries like rivers and lack of bridges that might take you to that next community, but that blue line, which is the county boundary, really doesn't mean a heck of a lot. So we absolutely look at, you all, the county, would look at the different communities within the county as well. So for instance, West Point, Central Garage. Interestingly, West Point, when we do the same leakage study, it's gaining, it's pulling people into the community, and I think that makes sense too, because they are a municipality, they have the jobs that we were talking about before, but they also have people that are coming from at least three counties to work there on a daily basis. So, and, and pass through too. I was down there during rush hour today, and I saw what that road does and what those, those couple of bridges do there as people are commuting back and forth.
Whole lot of folks from, you know, ACEs, it's up.
Yeah, and there's destination businesses like that, and ACEs are great businesses that really do have a geographic, or excuse me, a kind of a gravitational pull to them. They're really awesome businesses. Central Garage, interestingly, even though you have a, a, a commercial cluster here within, or up there within the Central Garage area, it's still leaking, there's still demand there within that. Now, to be fair, both of these analyses are with, or at least with Central Garage, I looked at about a five-minute drive time, I was trying not to overlap it with this area down here, mostly for the consumer market, not for the stores, because there's not a whole lot of commerce down this way. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to broaden that net a little bit more, because I kind of feel like that the Central Garage area actually is probably going to show a net gain. So I'm going to do this analysis again on about a 10 and a 15-minute drive time. But the point of all this is, again, is we have to understand what your market opportunities are and what that market demand is, both sort of in the granular detail within your market, but outside. So another, we also did this for the entire metro area as well. This, what we did is a five-minute drive time from the food line here, but, you know, looking at today, at, it's probably not, looking at, there's really no way to figure out the actual trade area without doing a market definition study, which is not part of, of this plan, but we can make some assumptions. And one of those assumptions is, as I was driving around today, I, I, I did learn, I did see that there is a significant residential population there. Again, you have a couple of, of multifamily developments there, and you also have some new single-family developments that are continuing to increase in terms of numbers of houses there in that area. So I'm going to broaden that out a little bit more, just to see what makes more sense. I think it might be a little bit tight right now, so. Thirty minutes? Oh, Route 30. Gotcha, gotcha.
Mr. Mulder, I just had a quick question. You were saying the geographic boundaries of King William don't really make a difference, but I sort of disagree, because those blue lines are rivers. I mean, King William is like a peninsula, and the only bridges are at 30 and then West Point, so you've got, if you want to go somewhere, you've got to go either to West Point to go, or you gotta go to 30, 360 to get out of the county.
And that's why drive time?
Yeah, right, right.
That's why drive time, and again, I think that that probably, when we look at the northeastern part of your county boundary, where you probably have a little bit less of geographic issues than you do in, in this part of the county that we're kind of zoomed into, I think my comment about the market does, and the market doesn't follow geographic boundaries, it does, I mean, excuse me, political boundaries, it does follow geographic boundaries, but that's also why drive time, when, when you're, when you're not doing a more detailed market definition study, and keep in mind, each business itself is going to have a different market geography, but if you're not doing collective market definition exercise, drive times are really the best way to do it. A lot of times, people will do concentric circles, and that's the most arbitrary way to figure out what a market happens to be, particularly when you've got bridges and rivers, or in the, the western part of the state, where you've got mountains and, and those sorts of things, so. So growth, retail growth, we also looked at that. Basically, based on your projected growth of the next five years, the, the demand that we see that's out there right now within the county is projected to grow by another close to $50 million. And again, that's based on new people moving into the county, and that, and that goes back to the comment I was making earlier about, yes, you know, there's things that we can do by recruiting a business that, or by keeping jobs located here in the county that can move the needle on demand, but even with us moving the needle on that demand, it's probably going to continue to grow. And the thing is here, you can look at the demand and leakage two different ways, and both of those are valid ways. You can say, you know what, we're not, we're not, right now, we're not meeting the needs of the consumers and the residents that live here in the county. By the same token, you can say, you know what, here's, here's our roadmap to recruitment and bringing in new investment into the county right there, and that's, I think that's a positive thing when you're looking at market opportunity. I haven't really looked at that right now yet. I think that when we get into the vision and goals, I think some of the opportunities about who we are as a community absolutely will overlay with some of the findings that, that we're seeing here right now, so. And again, I think that the competitive advantages vary from one side of the county to the other, and the communities, and basically, it's based a lot on geography, number one, and number two, where the growth happens to be. So I believe that this is the last slide, and this takes the, that, 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 that chart that I showed with the bar chart with the, the key demand opportunities, and it shows you some of those, shows each one of those in a little bit more detail. So I mentioned general merchandising, that was under auto dealerships, that was the biggest one. There's about $26 million in demand for that. Last year, you leaked $26 million. Now, that seems like a lot, and it is a lot. And I'm not suggesting this is something you should recruit, but just as a frame of reference, a typical Walmart, which is that category, averages about $50 to $75 million per year. So you can, you can say you're leaking about a half of a Walmart, as far as that's concerned in that category. Now, what this means is that also includes Dollar Generals and Family Dollars and those types of businesses, as well as independent general merchandising businesses that, that you, that you might see in some communities. So Dollar General, for example, they do annual sales of about $2 million-ish per year, but it's a, obviously, it's a much smaller footprint.
They've got one every two months.
They do, and that's the thing, that they are super nimble with, with, with their product, and in fact, we talked about this in, in our steering committee earlier today, Dollar Generals are really good with understanding what the needs of the market ha- that happen, happens to be. So if you go in $1 General store here in this community, and you go into another Dollar General store in, say, in Greenville, South Carolina, where I live, markets are completely different. Because of that, the merchandising in the stores are completely different. So a lot of times, we'll see when there's grocery demand in a community, as well as general merchandising, those Dollar Generals are the, but there's not enough demand for a new grocery store. Those Dollar Generals have a lot more grocery sales within the store themselves.
But you get into a real role, like 30 or somewhere, and they do carry everybody.
Absolutely.
Groceries.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
Really breakdown, maybe, because when you're talking about Walmart versus Dollar General versus Target versus Hamlet, and those are all very different stores, presumably you're attracted to shopping, but they're a bit weighted, they're kind of, hoping to capture, if we go through the, trying to target versus, which is probably not in the competition, but that versus trying to get some more out of them.
Right, good question. The market segmentation study I mentioned before helps describe that. But again, with all of these sets of data, and as you start to layer them, you start to make educated assumptions about what that true opportunity happens to be. I can't drill down into, okay, you know, $10 million of that $26 million leaving is going to Walmart, and then, you know, $5 million is going to Dollar General, I can't figure that out. But again, I think that we can make assumptions, but yes, you're right, there's not enough demand for Targets or, or Walmarts here in the community. So that would say our real opportunities right now today, and again, you, that might not be something you want in, in your county as well. A lot of times, in rural counties that have, you know, want to protect that rural character, they say, you know what, we don't want that, and, and that's okay if, if, if that's the case. But I think the answer to that question, it would be along the lines of more, that small-scale, small footprint, independent, not independent, but chain, like a Dollar, a Family Dollar, Dollar General, what have you, or those independents. There are some really good independents that you see throughout the community, I mean, throughout the state and other places that fall into this category. I think from a recruitment standpoint, it's a little bit more of a challenge, because you have to find that independent retailer to recruit them, but the great thing about that is, it is, you know, they become destinations. You think about, say, Mass General Store in Roanoke, is, it falls in this category. When you think about, incredibly unique one on the other side of the state, Floyd Country Stores, a general, if you're familiar with that, that business, it's a general merchandising establishment. Both Draper Mercantile and Draper is, is another great example. Each one of those are destinations. You know, Dollar General's not a destination, it's that convenient, that convenient use that, that you were mentioning earlier, but those other types are, are definitely destinations. And again, those kind of add to the experience in the community, as well as meeting the demand.
Mr.
I have it with these analyses, but these numbers do basically, they reflect that, because, I mean, that really drives a lot of it. Traffic's going to be driven by housing location, job location, and the location of the existing businesses, and I think that's one of the reasons why Central Garage is a commercial cluster here within your county, because of those traffic patterns that you have here. So it's, I did not look at that, but these data absolutely do account for those patterns, for sure, whether it be just general traffic patterns or commuting and, and what have you.
Mr. Mulder, I was just wondering about, do you have any statistics on, because like I said, some of the things that may, may want of this stuff, but do you have any statistics that show us what we want? A lot of people said we want a Rite Aid on CVS, but the thing is, it's not just whether we want it or not, they don't want to come here, because they have to have a certain number of rooftops, households. Do you have any kind of statistics that show us what, like, I know Walmart will never get, but like, just for quantity effect, how many households you need for this, how many households you need for Target, how many houses you need for Rite Aid, something like that, versus the Family Dollar? Like I said, because we have another application for Family Dollar up the road, but they'll come anywhere, but like you said, I don't know if we can get anybody else.
I mean, that's, that's a great question too, and, and I guess my best answer for that is, is twofold. One is that I do think with the survey and data, there are some questions we asked about, okay, this is showing us the real numbers of what the man happened to be, and with the survey, it also asked the residents of the community what those needs happen to be, and of course, you know, you match those up, and those are, those are your high-level targets. The other thing is, is really, it, it, I mean, you're, you're absolutely right, that's the, that's the biggest question of all, that's what makes retail recruitment a challenge in a rural community. However, you all being armed with the information, first, the, this data is going to help inform the rest of the comprehensive plan, looking out over the next 20-plus years and planning for growth in the community. But secondly, arming you all with the understanding and the knowledge of what the true demand happens to be and what those opportunities are, can help you target and recruit and, and communicate to those potential investors about, you know, I know that, I know that we may not have the number of rooftop, rooftops and the demographics that you say that you want, but here's what our data says. Our data says, we absolutely can support you. A lot of those chains in particular, you know, they're, they're, they've got their formulas, but they're also a little bit lazy too, you know, and, and they're gonna, they're gonna rule people out before they, they rule them in, and that's where your question was coming from. So I think, I think really, the strategy here is being armed with this data. How can we, as a community, whether it's King William County, certainly the EDA, how can we put, put together a strong market position? to help us communicate to those investors to come in and locate in the area? Income's a big, income is a big factor for sure. I mean, you're absolutely right. I mean, there's, there's certain businesses, you know, I, I go into communities all the time and they say, you know what, we want, we want Trader Joe's. And Trader Joe's, I mean, obviously they're not going to be in a rural county like this anyway. But they're not going to go, it, in a, it doesn't matter what the population is, what the growth is, they're not going to go into a community unless they have a certain threshold of, of income. So it's absolutely a factor in all of, of this for sure. Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So, which again, I think is when we look at all the demographic indicators about growth, when we look at housing value, particularly the fact that housing value has been increasing here, at least over the last decade, decade and a half. All those are great indicators of what we, you know, how, how this demand will continue to grow. And it might enhance our opportunities to get some of these things that we may not have gotten in the past, if that makes sense. That's. You have unlocked two very important observations about this and specifically the home centers that you're looking at. Number one, all of these numbers are based on, you know, annual leakage within the entire county. You're never, ever going to be able to recapture 100% of the dollars that are leaving your county. One of the next steps of what we're going to do is looking at a, a, a capture scenario is, you know, based on recruitment, based on growth within the county, based on us gaining some of these businesses that we know there's demand for. What's a reasonable percentage that we can capture? And it's scenarios. So, you know, this is, this is, this is all a little bit of, there's, there's, there's guessing and assumptions that goes along with that. But what we also can do is drill that number down into, so of that 11 million that's leaving home centers, what can we reasonably capture? And then based off of that, how can we drill that down into supportable square footage of, of retail? That's still a next step of our analysis. Now, the other thing that you've unlocked here with this one is this is last year's numbers. When did the Tractor Supply, when was it opened?
Two, two or three years.
Two years ago. So this should, this should account for that then. But a lot of times what we see is our numbers show something, somebody raises their hand and they're like, you know, like for example, we're doing a strategic plan in this rural community in North Carolina recently. And our numbers are showing, you know, you've got all this pent up demand for coffee shops and like, well, Starbucks is building right down the road. We're like, okay, well, we can erase that number off our opportunity list because you've, you've now absorbed all of this opportunity. So, so we have to look at new investment that's happened in the community over the time as well. So, and just a couple of case in points, I talked about home centers, 11 million of leakage. We know that we can't recapture 100%. That's nowhere near what a big home center might do, but however, it's things like Ace Hardware, things like Tractor Supply really fit that niche pretty well. Grocery stores, you've got 12.2 million dollars in leakage across the county. Okay? So if you look at, so you've got two food lines in the county right now. So that's your main product that you have here. Food line does on an annual basis about 18 to 19 million dollars. So that tells us is there's demand. I mean, if we look at the sheer numbers, there's demand for, you know, about maybe three quarters of a food line. But we also know that we can't recapture 100% of those dollars. So that might point more to opportunities for smaller, smaller independents. It might point for opportunities for like the existing food lines to expand. It might look, point for opportunities for things like fresh foods, produce, meat markets. All of those numbers are, are cooked into this and I can give you more detail on that as well. So, and the last one I'll mention too is health and personal care. Again, this is all just to give you a frame of reference, but I think it's an interesting one. We talked a lot about this in our steering committee today. You have about 5.7 million in leakage in that category and that's, drugstores are in that category. Then they're the main part of, of that particular category. A typical Walgreens does, and I think you, you have Walgreens in, in the county right now down in West Point. Typical Walgreens does about 8.5 million dollars a year. So on the one hand, you're not leaking enough for a Walgreens. But on the other hand, Walgreens aren't just drugstores. Walgreens are essentially little mini Walmarts or general merchandising establishments. They do about 30% of their sales and actual drugstore sales and the rest is convenience and, and general merchandising. So a lot of times what we see is when these numbers aren't showing, say, enough demand for a typical Walgreens. However, there's the numbers of general merchandising that's showing opportunity within your community. We've often found that already you've got that Walmart, Walgreens or that CVS sniff around in your community because they see that there probably is, that when we start to layer these, these numbers, there is demand within the community. So I think first glance, uh, maybe not one, there's not an opportunity. But really when we look deeper, you know, this could be one of your big opportunities here within the county. So.
Like you said, another major thing might be infrastructure. It's like I said, we don't have the internet, but it sounds like from our previous presentation, we're getting that. But another thing is like water, sewer, electric. But we've got gas going to the kitty litter plant in West Point, but it doesn't come to Central Garage. We've got sewer in some places. We've got, you know, that spotty water sort of central garage and goes a little ways, but not everywhere. So that could be a major problem too. And that's why the EDA, when we, we used to work before the COVID, we all got together, used to look at sites where we could have ready for somebody to come in. But it would be a site that had all the improvements already done and we really don't have anything. I don't, I don't know if we, if y'all have come up with anything. I mean, I don't know, because like I said, we haven't met in a long time. So if we have some, we talked about having some sites that are built ready, I guess. Like that's a lot of things we've learned. They hand over Fairfax, they have these sites that are all almost built to have something come in. They just, company comes in and just tweaks a few things and they can come. They don't have to start from scratch and get everything from the beginning. I don't know.
Great.
How are you supposed to forecast the size building or whatever, the amount of property and land, the amount of water they're going to need, you know, to go ahead and pre-build it, having sites to build on, I can see.
Yeah, I don't, I certainly don't know that I can answer that question right now. And I can tell you that it, it'll definitely depend on the type of business and operation. But both of those questions I think hit on a point that's of economic development 101. It doesn't matter if we're talking about a restaurant, if we're talking about, you know, a clothing shop or if we're talking about, you know, a kitty litter plant. It's when we think about economic development, it's first understanding what the market bears for us. That's what, everything that I've shared with you today is understanding it. The next thing is what you've mentioned, it's creating an environment for that investment to happen. Doesn't matter what the demand happens to be. If you don't have the infrastructure to support that demand, it ain't gonna come.
Right.
And then the third thing is, is what I mentioned to you earlier, which I think we'll go, we'll definitely go into some strategy in the comp plan is market positioning. How can we communicate this opportunity to bring that in? How do we recruit this? How do we take that knowledge? How do we build our, our infrastructure? And then how do we communicate that to target that investment within our community? And that's really the three legs of the stool of, of economic development regardless of, of what you're looking at. And, and all of this helps inform that. And that's, I think, where, where we are in this comprehensive planning process right now. And that's the, that's why it's wise of you all to have said, you know, we need to look at economics of, of the county as we're going through this comp plan, because I think that these data, the growth data, the demand data informs everything that the rest of the Hill Studio team is going to be doing throughout the rest of this, this planning process. I think that's a, absolutely a great observation right there. And I've seen it happen in communities before. I can, I will, I can look at your neighboring counties. I haven't looked at them independently. We happened to do a recent plan, it wasn't a comp plan, it was a strategic plan across the river in New Kent relatively recently. And their data was different from y'all's in some respects. It was very similar to y'all's in other respects. One of the ways they were similar is with commercial and retail, small town county. One way that they're different is residential growth and what, what's happening there right now. The, the values that are, I mean, they're, they're all, they're an outlier within the whole region. But I can definitely look at particularly the, the retail, because it's a, it's a real quick study in the surrounding counties. That was New Kent County. Yeah. And again, that's one that's separated by a big river from you all. So it's really, even though it's adjacent to you, it's not as really comparable to you as some of the other.
Oh, yes, yes. Interstate.
Agree, agree with you a hundred percent. I probably shouldn't even have mentioned it, but I can, I can look at the, the, the counties that surround you. And I suspect what we're going to see is that everything's going to be different. But the further away that we get from Richmond and its gravitational pull, that the, the challenges are going to be completely different. And there might be, and I don't know this to be fact, but when we, when we get further away from you all, we might see that the challenges are greater in some of these other near neighboring counties, but I'll have to look at the data.
I think, I think one thing you're going to find is, it's a very large number of people that travel 360 from King William Essex, even as far as the northern neck. I don't think it's just basic population rooftops. We, we need to find a way to make it, as you said, a destination. Scott.
And, and great, great comment. And I think too, if you look at the Central Garage area, one of the things I didn't really appreciate until today, until we were driving around is that you all have made some pedestrian enhancements right there at that intersection that connects one side of the road to the other. That's huge. But by the same token, you've got the, the residential areas to the, the northwest of that going up the road. They may still need to have that improved connection. You know, sidewalks only go so far and stop a couple of blocks from, you know, a pretty dense residential area. It's a great comment that, you know, the, the, the access is very important to the health of these businesses. I'll look at that in a little bit more detail in terms of leakage, in terms of the second segmentation study that I was talking about, but also with projected demand that, that looks at individual business categories. And I know that I can give you a, a, a better granular understanding specifically of the grocery category there to help explain that. But even, even at that point, I think that we have to combine what the data tells us, what our assumptions happen to be within the community, what we will support, and then what we want, as I, as I mentioned before as well. Because there might be things that we, that we could, you know, we could recruit here right now that maybe we don't necessarily will, maybe not. Absolutely. That's a good point too. All of these market demand figures from the retail standpoint, it's not just about recruiting new. It's also about having existing businesses grow from within. That can have even more of an impact on your community on multiple levels. But again, being armed with this data, number one, which we are now, but also providing that to those existing businesses in the community so they can understand that. You know, I was thinking about expanding, well, this gives me the data to say, well, that, you know, that may or may not be a wise investment. And not only that, they can use that as part of their business plan that can help them get financing too, to do that expansion. In terms of grocery, yes. And I mean, a lot of this is, I mean, I've, I've shared with you, you know, a half dozen data points within this analysis for retail and there's over 80 that I've looked at as far as that's concerned. Yeah, right. Mr. Holderite has his hand raised. We can go ahead and get him recognized on the Zoom meeting.
Yes, thank you. I, I know we covered a couple of different topics. I want to go back to the vehicle sales and just maybe you can share on some of the work you've done in smaller counties. So you talk about competitive advantages. We have a very competitive tax situation when it comes to vehicle sales or any, any inventory sales, I'll call it really, that are outlined counties do have to pay tax on. So the fact that we don't have a motor vehicle dealership, which I know we have them in the West Point area, but as far as Central Garage. So we're looking at about a 57 million. I, I know the, a major Ford or Chevrolet dealership, what, what on average are they doing in a rural community?
I don't know the answer to that question on average. And, you know, I think back to some of the other rural communities that, that, that I've worked in recently. And I just, I don't know that you see as many of those single dealers like you used to. Again, I think that that particular category of, of, of retail, they want to be close to each other so that people can do all their shopping essentially at, at once. And that's why you have motor miles in communities where all your car dealerships happen to be in the same location. And that puts rural communities for car dealerships in particular at a competitive disadvantage. By the same token, you know, there, that is demand that, that, that is there. And there absolutely could be an opportunity for smaller types dealers. This does break down in more granular data again into new car sales, used car sales as well as other types of, you know, motor vehicle sales, so to speak, like, you know, when you live in a county that's surrounded by water. You know, some, some of those, those data may point to opportunities and needs for boat sales as well. That's here in this and I can provide more detailed data in this plan as well on that.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Right, you know, you you've seen a lot, a lot of those local, small, independent franchise type dealers, like even Medlin, you know, is now owned by Richmond Ford, which is a huge, uh, outfit. Um, you know, everybody's competing on price with dealers that are a hundred miles away. And so, I mean, you know, some dealers will transfer across the country to get you a car at the price point you want. So, um, you know, a lot of these places now are are just mega corporations that make it up on volume. There's really not any small independent franchise dealers that even exist anymore. Right, right, right. But again, you're talking about a mega corporation there. I mean, if you look at a lot of the dealerships that people deal with, you know, we're talking about Priority Sheehy Hyman Brothers. Those are huge, huge corporations if you really look at what they're comprised of. So, you know, multiple dealerships in multiple locations throughout a multi-state area in many instances.
Yeah, and it's interesting, too. And again, I don't, I I wouldn't claim to know that market backwards and forth, but it 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 kind of reminds me of a coffee shop, you know. Coffee shops, um, are successful based on volume. You know, they're not making a ton of money on, um, every coffee cup that that they sell. But if they sell a lot of coffee, that's when they're successful. Really, with new cars, it's 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 my understanding that it's kind of a little bit of the same thing. It's volume, as you mentioned, um, because there's not a a ton of profit that's cooked into that. It's different with used car sales, again, my understanding.
With the prices, you'd think it would be.
Yeah, it would, for sure. That's why I got a twelve-year-old car, so.
Right, right. But again, it 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 does tell the other side of the story where we're talking about, okay, well, you know, this isn't enough to, uh, attract a Walmart. We probably don't want a Walmart. But, you know, these numbers, we're looking at automobile dealers and automobile sales. There certainly are lots of opportunities in in the aftermarket now with vehicle sales. Um, you're seeing a lot of people in my industry on the repair side starting to get more into into sales. A lot of, a lot of places that I work with are starting to increase their sales outfit. So again, it's opportunities, again, possibly for even existing businesses here to move into that market and try to capture some of that.
Absolutely.
The only one I know who's dealing with Medlin, you know, he went over there for space, I think, because there was no new location.
Right, and now they're completely out of it. Now it's owned by one of those mega corporations. Right. Do you have this, the presentation online that you can send to us?
I'll be happy to share it it with you. And then ultimately, um, as we get through this, they'll have all the loads of, you know, ad nauseam granular data as well, um, for sure. We have to. You know, one of the other things, too, when you think about demand and growth and growing existing businesses, one of the observations I made today as I was driving around, particularly the central garage area and in that corridor, is that there's not much vacancy in what you have right now. Now, in some places, you may not have the highest and best use that's occupying that particular space, but you don't have, um, a lot of vacancy, which we are seeing in other rural communities. And, um, I think that really points back to these data and says, this is showing demand. The fact that we may not necessarily, you know, that that that's reflected in the fact that all of our spaces or most of our spaces are actually filled right now, too. So that's a, that's a good thing. I would think that there would be that opportunity, um, typically when you, we look at these numbers and we see that there's, there's demand. Um, but I haven't looked at the tabuhanic market yet, so let me, let me look at that. I mean, I think there would absolutely be from a couple of standpoints, wanting to capture that through traffic coming in and out, which these numbers do account for that, particularly from the store's sales standpoint. That's capturing the people that are stopping at the food line on their way, you know, to an adjacent county, um, on a daily basis. So so that's, that's, um, important there. But also thinking, again, I think this gets into land development in general and the bigger picture of the, um, of 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 this comprehensive plan is, you know, it may not be just singular singular uses that we need to be thinking about. Perhaps our opportunities come with looking at more mixed-use type developments that have commerce, that has, um, office, that has residential as part of that. And I think a lot of that could be realized in the the central garage corridor as well, because I think that's the area that, that not only is that traffic there, but I do think you have a lot of infrastructure.
Talking about a town center concept, I believe.
Absolutely.
Okay. We're going to see you again?
Yes.
Okay. We're looking forward to that, uh, you know, because I kind of see it, the homework for for these boards, based on this information here, is to start thinking about, um, you know, synthesizing these numbers into things that we want to see incorporated into into this plan and start providing that input, uh, you know, ideas that you would like to see, um, us start to incorporate into the plan as to how we turn this data into, um, a policy document.
One more question.
Yep.
Sir, uh, your anticipated growth to twenty thousand, that's, I'd be optimistic, twenty-one thousand. What percentage of that may, might be children of school age so that we can pass the info to the school systems as well?
That, I'm not, I'm not sure that I can answer that right now. I think we can make some assumptions that, you know, if we look at the existing growth trends, like, so what are we seeing in our new residential developments that are happening here right now? We had a conversation about this earlier today. The ACS shows your, um, your, um, your, your household size are, is about two-point-seven-four people per house. But it was mentioned today that, um, there's, there's some knowledge from, that's been shared with some residential developers that is closer to two people, maybe even a little bit less. So that might point to, um, you know, what maybe it's, maybe it's younger, um, singles, uh, couples that are moving into the county that may, in the future, have, um, have children. Or perhaps it means that, you know, there's, there's, or we're aging and we're getting more, um, middle, uh, you know, empty nesters and retirees. I think we can probably look at the data and and figure out some of that, um, a a little bit more. One of the things, though, I didn't mention, I I shared with you, I thought that that was a conservative figure. That number came from the Weldon Cooper Center, uh, uh, potential for twenty, it's like twenty thousand five hundred and change in twenty forty for the county. If you look at the, um, the, uh, higher number of, uh, um, household size and compare that to the fact that you were having, I think last year was a hundred and fifty-plus single-family, new single-family residential, um, units built here. And this year's going to be something similar to that. Um, you're going to hit that twenty thousand much sooner than twenty forty. Um, I don't know that we can do that with the data that we have. That is county building permit data. We can probably take a look at it geographically within the county. And then, of course, the, it it does include house, household values. Um, and again, I think with, with, with this, with any of these data points, I think that, um, at at some point, we might have to make some assumptions with it as well. And again, maybe understanding where it's happening, what we're seeing in in geographic areas might say, okay, well, that's probably more families that are, but who who knows? Um, but I don't think that the data that we have that we shared with you can tell you exactly, okay, this, these, of that two-hundred, a hundred and fifty, um, building permits for new single-family housing, you know, fifty percent of that is two people or less, and fifty percent of that is, you know, three-plus people. I don't think we can.
Well, and is that even a predictor? Because one thing that through, you know, these last ten years or so of development, we've not seen an appreciable increase in our average daily membership in the school system. Um, and and I don't think anybody could crack that nut and tell you, is that because of fewer children being in the county? Is it a trend towards homeschooling? Is is it, you know, younger families only? That's, that's, that's a real, that's an onion you got to peel back to really understand. So just sheer number, you know, that's probably the only assumption we can make, but the trends haven't necessarily borne that out in the last ten years or so. So it's, it's been an interesting observation.
Absolutely.
Okay. I think, uh, we'll move to the next phase of this here, keep things moving along. We look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
With with Hill Studios, okay. All right, I'm just going to give you guys a quick little survey update. Um, survey's been open for about nine to ten weeks, two and a half months. We've seen since the last time I spoke to you all about a double or twice, you know, an increase of about a hundred people. I think we were at a hundred the first time, or about two hundred. You really want to get to about three hundred, uh, where that three hundred number is, is, um, generally, to get a good statistical bias, you want about three, three or so percent of your demographic that you're asking for the survey. And as you all know, you have about seventeen thousand people, um, of twenty-five percent or so are are under twenty. So say about ten thousand people that we're trying to capture, so that'd be about three hundred, it's about three percent. So we're, we're still going to keep the survey open. Um, it may seem like a small number, but again, if you start to get some general overall trends that you can start to synthesize and extrapolate to, um, support some of the stuff that Aaron just, uh, presented to you all. Um, yeah, I'm just going to run through them real quickly. So majority of the people, um, relationship with King William County is that they live in King William. Um, it's, you know, seventy-five percent or so that have taken the survey. No, this is not from the, this is, uh, this is the survey for the comprehensive plan that was going out with the county. You may have seen some signs on the county and some of these little handouts, um, some things on social media. Um, so that's, that's been going on, ongoing for the last couple of months. Um, we're going to continue to capture more respondents, uh, over the coming, coming months. Um, uh, why do you choose to live or be a part of King William County? A lot of people are saying they own property here, um, you know, homeownership, uh, or they just enjoy the rural tranquility and landscape of the county. So it just kind of helps you understand why people, you know, choose to live here, um, kind of seen it, the beauty. Um, how positive an image do you have of King William County? One to five, five being the best. Um, most people are kind of a fair, neutral, um, relationship with the county, or positive image of the county. Um, this is what you call a word cloud, which basically takes all the responses. I think we asked for three words or short phrases from everyone that described the character of of King William. It just takes all those, and the bigger the word, the more responses they had. So you see things like rural, country, quiet, peaceful, uh, friendly. So a lot of, a lot of these are synonymous with each other. What are the three biggest strengths? Uh, again, rural, the river, school systems, the landscape, proximity to Richmond, the atmosphere, the the incredible nature, um, just the general location of the, of King William County. What are the three biggest weaknesses? Um, internet, but as we started this meeting off with, that's getting, um, slowly corrective as the years go on. And, um, some people say some things regarding schools and businesses, um, having resources for the community, taxes, that kind of thing. Uh, what do you believe are the top challenges in the county for the next ten to twenty years? Um, again, kind of covered this over the, um, beginning of this meeting, affordable internet and broadband services, uh, which is great, that supports exactly what you all are working hard towards right now. Um, quality of education in schools, um, is important, um, and 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 viewed as a challenge. Um, economic development, again, everything we just, we just discussed with Aaron there. You know, where can those jobs be created and how can we capture more people to come and live here? Um, again, I'm just going over the, kind of, some of the top, um, responses here. Uh, quality of life, these are some of the highest numbers, um, uh, closer to four, uh, you know, more of a, a good review rather than a neutral fare review. These are safety, um, King William has a place to live, and King William has a place to raise a family, sense of community, those types of things. Uh, regarding the economy, again, these are, these are all gauge one to five. Um, this overall had some of the lowest responses, all being under, under three. Overall, local economy, local businesses and quality of those businesses and services, establishments, and, um, you know, opportunity for economic growth. So I think that's some of the biggest challenges we have here ahead. Uh, regarding infrastructure, some of the, um, the highest ranked things were electricity, access to water, um, traffic circulation. So a lot of these were around three. And, uh, it's, you know, it's important to just to watch those numbers as as we get more responses coming in. Um, as far as community services, some of the highest ranked ones, um, fire, EMS, school systems, uh, sheriff and police, uh, all scoring high. And then it's also important to look at some of the ones that scored low, you know, where where can you improve some of the services, you know, recreational opportunities, that kind of thing. Existing development, uh, some of the highest rate ones were maintenance of homes and buildings, preservation of historic buildings. Um, that's a very important one here in in King William. Uh, there's a lot of architectural historic sites in this county. Um, affordable housing opportunities, these are all, uh, rated, you know, three or four above. This one in the next slide, all regard, are regarding future development in the county. Um, a lot of these were around four. Uh, some of the highest ones were attracting businesses, uh, industry jobs, um, very important for, for folks here that took the survey in terms of future development, um, schools, public safety, uh, availability, healthcare, medical services, internet broadband availability. So you're seeing some of things like internet and broadband continuously repeated throughout the survey as an important, um, asset that that folks here in the county would love to have. Um, reasonable taxes is important, uh, I think, um, just overall communication and, um, and, um, leadership. What types of retail services would you like to see? Again, this kind of supports what what, um, what Aaron was saying. Uh, you know, that's what the market, what Aaron presented on was what the market data tells us. This is what, you know, folks in the county, um, responded to. And this, these were things like family-friendly restaurants, family-friendly entertainment, uh, coffee shops, grocery stores. Um, just missing the the top five here was, you know, bar or brewery, place to, you know, socialize and and, um, get out in the evenings. What types of public private facilities you like to see in the county? Uh, medical services, um, by far, um, had the most responses. Um, gym, you know, some recreational opportunities there, uh, and senior services, um, as, uh, a lot of the respondents were, were, um, I think, over, over sixty in the survey. Uh, what types of residential housing would you like to see in King William? Uh, a lot of people saying single-family housing, which is kind of supportive of what you already have. I believe it's around two-thirds of your, um, existing housing stock. Uh, senior housing, affordable housing, uh, townhomes, condominiums. So you start to see, you know, what could some of these like village-type centers, um, uh, say in central garage that could have multipurpose, mixed-use? Um, I know you have some new complexes that have recently built over in that area. Uh, what would you like to see more of in King William? Um, a resounding number of people, about twenty-five percent would like to have, uh, a little more than thirty percent like to have a farmer's market, uh, recreational facilities, uh, improved, you know, trails for hiking, um, you know, kayaking, biking, that type of thing. Um, playgrounds, you know, sporting, um, sports facilities, uh, new ball fields, um, or expansion of the existing ball fields that you already have. Uh, river and water access, uh, is important to, to a lot of folks here in the county, public event space. Uh, one of the free responses, you may notice that some of these questions we skipped, and those, those because they were long free response questions that we've kind of synthesized into the goals and visions that, um, Eevee Sloan's going to, going to present on here in a second. And a lot of people said, uh, performing, performing arts center would be, um, there is about twenty-five to thirty responses out of the two-hundred that that set up performing arts center of some sorts would be, um, a beneficial. And then this is just the demographics of who's kind of taking the survey. We see a lot of people over the age of, um, you know, thirty, uh, ranging, you know, most people, uh, forty to forty-nine range. Uh, so emails, slight. Um, and then lastly, what is the highest degree of education? A lot of people, um, with bachelor's degrees or some form of college education or even as high as a, you know, master's degree. So, um, a lot of, a lot of higher, higher education responses here. And then lastly, I'm going to just pass this over to Eevee.
So what Ross didn't tell you about the survey is that we had a lot of open-ended questions. And that's really where I believe that you get the most information about what people have to say about the direction for the future, um, of the county. And so I wanted to share with you all this, um, draft vision that, um, we, that I have put together, and this is the first cut of this. Um, I haven't gotten any comments back, even from the steering committee, um, members that I've kind of sent it to. I haven't gotten any comments back even from the steering committee members that I've kind of sent it to. But essentially, I took everything that we've heard so far, from talking with people, from the survey, and I tried to develop a vision for the future for King William County. And I want to just read that to you, and then I'll talk to you a little bit about the goals. So what I'd like for you to think about as I, as I read this, or as you read it, and I have them over here, and I think at some point, we can get those, get it to you as well. But I want you to think about what have I missed? Because that's what I need to be able to add to for the long-range plan. So right now, the draft vision is in 2041, King William County will be a thriving, safe, friendly and caring community that exhibits extraordinary rural agricultural and natural landscapes and offers a peaceful country lifestyle for raising a family. Outdoor recreational experiences abound for residents and visitors on scenic rivers, state forest lands, public parks and private farms. Home to three of the oldest Native American tribes in the nation, a historic courthouse dating to circa 1725, King William County continues to celebrate and honor its unique heritage and preserve its character while effectively managing responsible community growth. The diverse economy of small businesses and tailored special, specialized industry contributes to the community prosperity, which is evident in affordable taxes, quality public services, a distinguished educational system and a focused 21st, 21st century utility infrastructure. Next one. So think about it. You don't have to give me any answers today, but think about it. So then what I did, and this helps us kind of begin to frame how we move forward and, and help the county progress in the direction that it wants to go. And so these goals are very, very broad. It's important, I think, to keep them simple so that you don't end up with a list of 25 goals or something. But sustained agriculture is a key goal, I think, for this county, at least that's what I've heard. And I'm not gonna read the goal, I'm just gonna go through the categories. A diversified, resilient economy is very important, and that's what we're hearing. Celebrate the heritage of the community, because I think it's very unique with, as, as opposed to other communities. The rural environment, conserve and protect that rural environment. A healthy community, and that healthy community goal deals with things like housing, social and medical services and the recreational amenities. And then you've got the 21st century facilities and infrastructure, which deals with things like public safety, utilities, communication, transportation and education. And then a balanced and managed land development. And that's basically to achieve a balanced tax base so that the county can pay the bills and you have the facilities for residents that you need to and to upgrade the infrastructure. And then responsible government, governments, which is basically to share communication between the government and citizens and to provide some type of a policy document to make informed decisions. And so those are the, the goals, the draft goals that basically as we write this plan, what we want to do is then begin to develop the direction of the plan and the recommendations that we make consistent with these goals and this vision. So I would very much appreciate it if you would look through that and if there's anything that I've missed or something maybe is in error or maybe wasn't, I used a wrong word, let me, let us know. And, and this, I think, David, if you want to talk a little bit about what we're doing tomorrow and Wednesday, that would be great.
And I'll be quick, I know you have a lot more to do. So thanks, E.V. My name is David Hill. I have the honor of, of working with this extraordinarily gifted planning team. And we're here for the next, well, today, the next two days. And Steve and Cherry were nice enough to secure this room for us. We'll be working in here a lot for the next couple of days and also a couple of officers that are out here that were available to us. And we'll be working on some early planning solutions. Aaron's brought you up a lot of the demographic material, Ross has got what people have asked for. And, and now we've tried to formulate the goals. And we'll be trying to work on some planning solutions, you know, tracing paper, maps, those kind of ideas over the next couple of days. I was working specifically in, in themes like parks and recreation, corridors and travel, business and business parks, village design, how villages might grow, rural and agricultural preservation, these types of topics. And, and we'll be presenting those findings Wednesday evening, seven o'clock right here. And we'd like to invite you all, if you can, to come by and review that work. And then, and, and I'll, you know, give us more advice, because, you know, this is an iterative process. You tell us what's working, what's not, we take it home and clean it up even more. So also, Ross, I believe you mentioned that the survey is still up on the website. So if you haven't had a chance to, you know, register your thoughts and invite others to, to go ahead and take that survey. So, so we thank you all for, for having us here. We're learning a lot and we really appreciate the opportunity to come and work with you all. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Before, before you, Ross, so the staff has recently put the survey information at the local libraries. You've got a lot of experience in developing goals and visions, and you've taken the information your folks have put together with the survey, survey responses. But obviously, the most important folks to weigh in on that are the supervisors, the citizens and all these folks. The more information that she has of what you all want to see, what the citizens want to see, the more effective that can be.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Chairman, one thing I'm deeply disappointed in is the number of returns on this survey. Extremely disappointing that we don't have as much complaining as we see on various media, why there aren't more survey takers. May I ask Ms. Walker to perhaps hit Facebook for us, Country Courier, Mr. Campbell, same? And let's try to, I'd love to hit 500.
Yeah, I was, I was hoping to get at least 500, and, and 300 is statistically valid.
Yeah.
But I would much prefer at least 500. The county of 17,000 people should be able to get 500 survey responses.
How long do we anticipate leaving it open?
Yes.
Oh.
But the earlier we get it in, the, the better we can use the information.
Yeah, because we're, we're working on it the whole time. Okay, thank you. All right, now we're on item five, work session manager. We have a building department update from Mr. Swinson. I'm sorry. Well, they might be interested in this, right? Are you interested in this?
Yes.
Okay, all right, yeah, we'll, we'll take a brief pause here and give the E.D.A. and the Planning Commission an opportunity to adjourn. They can stick around if they want, or they can not, as they prefer. Sure, but I think for, for as far as your, your portion of it, you can go ahead and adjourn. That way it's done, and then you can stay there, you can go anywhere.
Congratulations to adjourn.
Take the motion.
So a second? All the figures say aye.
Aye.
Very good, okay. So we'll move on to building department update. Mr. Swinson, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Board Chairman. My name is Anthony Swinson. I'm introducing myself today to the board. I'm a native of Charleston County. I have a, a lot of accolades. I won't go into those, it's not important at this time. I just wanted to inform the board that there will be some future changes here in the code session. We will be moving to the USBC 2018. The actual code itself, the state has already statewide implemented that as of Jan., as of July 1st, 2021. So we are currently under that code, but each municipality has 12 months to actually implement that code. So we will actually be implementing that code cycle January 3rd, 2022. We've also created... We tried to inform as many owners, customers, contractors that the code cycle is, is coming forward. As we do inspections, as we talk to numerous customers that come in and get permits, we, we try to give them as much information as possible. We've also went to our website and updated the webpage that will help them along the way to understand some of the new code changes that's gonna be applicable to their particular trade, particular aspect of building. So that particular link right there coming soon gives some overview. It's, it's, we're still working on getting more robust information to the contractors, to the homeowners, to actually give them some information. Because we all, of course, know that we just went to the new system with admins in our department. So we wanted to actually have something to help them. So if they actually click on the new building code changes, it has links and some highlights at this time, which we will update and try to put more information in there. And if they go to the code reference links, that actually, if they click on any of these links, it takes them to some of the actual code requirements that's gonna be applicable in 2018 code cycle. It also breaks down, they can actually go into the code. And if they wanted to research a code because we had a, in the future, they wanted to use that code to check why they failed one of their inspections, they are able to. Just click on Virginia Building Codes ICC at the bottom. So yes, view is, view is basic, Virginia Code 2018, the third, view is basic. So this is the digital format that ICC has as well as DHCD, which links directly to the same page. And in these categories over to the left, it basically gives them all of the categories which we enforce code on. They can click on any of those code chapters and it breaks it down. And just click on anyone, it doesn't matter, definition. And it breaks down the information that they would need to research their own reasoning for their fail or pass if they wanted to look at code to see how to design their structure or their information. The admin system, we just, as of last week, went live on the building department side. And we look forward to the future of, in the next, end of this month, beginning of August, somewhere in that neighborhood, that we will actually allow the customer side to be able to go online and schedule an inspection. With the new information that I'm hearing in this meeting, I was excited because, one, we get a new broadband. That's gonna be awesome because everyone will have the ability to not only use your phone or your hotspot, you'll have it available in your businesses. So that's, that, I heard some real good stuff today. And I was excited about hearing all of that because it makes it, it gives me the thoughts here that I'm on the right pace of understanding that the county is growing. And I see it every day because I'm actually physically seeing inspection, doing inspection and seeing the county actually continuously grow, and I'm excited about it. As, as the building official, I was previously privy to work under the city of Richmond. And I saw how different things in municipality aspects of growth goes. And they take a neighborhood and develop it. And I see some of the builders doing some of the same things in that same format, and I can only see future growth. I see King William County being a really large-scale, homegrown municipality, and it's, it's exciting to watch. I can't wait to see where we'll be in the next 10 years. I love to see these projections that were so robust and they were hands-on information that I, I absorbed. I actually took notes myself. One of the things that, of course, with any new anything, there's always issues. And we're still resolving some, and it's gonna take a little time on our side to, to deal with admins, to get all of the pieces to our puzzle to work robustly like they should. And even at this point, we can't open our customer side because of that particular issue. And that's what we're working on very, very hard. We are actually every day hands-on dealing with admins to help us walk through this system because we were really, unfortunately, didn't have the information ahead of time. And we got it kind of late in the, in, in the processes. But overall, when we have the full access and the customer has the full access, I think that the future is so bright. The customers that we are looking at to port, to actually pilot the program, we're looking at a few of the builders here that do volume building in a sense, to get them acclimated to the system first, and then we will open it up to the entire public. So that would help see some issues on the customer side as well prior to allowing a continuous, try to fix on hand as the other customers decide to utilize the same service. One of the paperwork that was generated that I, I think is in your package is the actual permitting information that this month, as of the 22nd, I believe, we had nine permits issued this month, and we've already performed over 315 inspections. That's a lot of inspections for a small municipality. And that tells me that we're in the right place, growing at the right time, even through COVID. I didn't see any slowdown in any of our inspection processes. I would have never known we were in COVID based on the inspection load, the permitting, the certificate of occupancies. I would have never known that was an issue. I mean, that, that actually, we were in COVID. We also issued out 13 certificates of occupancies this mon-, this month. So the building department, we are actually having a good time of, of just absorbing everything that the county has for us. We are open to questions. We have a lot of customers that called in to help, ask, that, that need help, and we're here for them. As the building official, my main objective is, is to make sure that life safety does not be compromised. The county is always, will want to make sure that we protect every investment that we have in our customers. Our residents are as important as any entity that you can possibly imagine. And that is one of the main objectives of, of our department. The customer service, the information that they would need, and scheduling of inspections, whatever the customer or the contractor needs, we are available for them. Our, we have an open door policy. If you need us, call us. If you need us, call. I'm open for any questions.
Anybody? All right, well, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, we're looking forward to. Like you said, positive, Greg, right?
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hudgens, you're up with this cigarette tax business.
So effective the first of this month, Virginia had passed legislation allowing localities, counties for the first time to. Enact a tax on cigarettes, local tax on cigarettes, up to two cents per cigarettes, which equates to about 40 cents. Per pack. And really, I want to know how the board feels, if the board would like us to proceed with implementing that tax. This tax. Uses utilizes a stamping system, just like the state does. And specifically. If we proceed. In a regional form, then there is a dual stamp already made that wholesalers would be able to purchase. And use in this locality.
My first question right off the bat is how is this handled between the town and the county?
I've already talked to Mr. Edwards and if right now the town has no cigarette tax on on its own. If we didn't do anything, they probably wouldn't pass one either. However. And let me say, if they don't act, if we pass legislative, if we pass this tax, it would count in the count, in the town. Their revenue, the revenue from the town would go into our general levy. If they didn't act, that means that that money in our general levy would not be able to be appropriated to the schools because of split levy.
Right.
However. In all likelihood, if we pass an ordinance for cigarette tax, then West Point would pass their own tax, their own cigarette tax. So District One, West Point would keep their own money. Districts two through five would have its own tax and in there. The question is.
Probably end up another. It would be a school remit at that point, wouldn't it?
It's not by law, but.
But it's practically, that's probably how we that's how we have.
We're assuming it's going to go to the schools.
I'm sorry, that's the problem.
We're assuming that it's going to go towards the schools.
Right, that's why I asked, I wanted to make sure that that, I mean, because as I was thinking about it and I didn't dive down into the legislation. Deep enough before the meeting to see how it worked, knowing that the town doesn't currently have one. All these machinations that he just went over. You know, so basically where it comes down to it is if we start collecting money. Inside the town and the money that we collect inside the town, at least, we would not be able to appropriate to the school system. Based on the split legislation, that is law. Now, if the town starts collecting their own tax, which it sounds like they would plan to do if we institute a tax. Then that would supersede our collection rights within the town limits. We would be collecting it only on sales that took place in districts two through five. Now, nothing in the law says we have to appropriate that 100% to schools, but as we went through this year, when you don't appropriate it 100% to schools. And you end up artificially deflating the general tax or the general fund tax levy, which. Causes problems when it comes to taxation within the town.
Well, before we get that far down the road, let's decide what we want to do. I'd like to point out, right now, the state of Virginia is charging a 30 cent per pack tax. Federal government, a dollar and one cent per pack tax. So this is going to allow the county to charge 40 cent per pack, four dollars per carton. Correct?
Correct.
Well. I worked in the tobacco industry and, you know, that's the soft spot for me. I don't condone smoking at all, but the tobacco industry has paid a whole lot of money. 1998 master settlement agreement, $2.5 billion. In today's money, that's probably $500 billion. These are yearly payments and they are based on the sales. This is over and above this excise tax. I mean, we I've seen the closing. Of two plants in Richmond during my employment, Louisville, Kentucky during my employment, Cabarrus, North Carolina during my employment. And then we can look at it another way. If we are the only locality that does not have this tax, we will see. A large number of these people from adjoining counties come to this county, do business and maybe spend a little bit of money in other places here. I'm totally against it. I don't I don't know any other way to make this argument. Yet I know you probably worked at Philip Morris for maybe a year.
One year.
Yeah.
But I.
You know.
I see this as a potential tax revenue. I. I asked the question, I'll ask it again. It seems that we we are assuming that if we collect this revenue, we're assuming it's going to go towards the schools. I don't see it that way. Well, I don't think it's necessary.
Well, the the $2.5 billion in this master settlement. Only 3% of that money went towards programs to stop smoking or helping smokers. Only 3% of the money, even though a very large percentage of it was supposed to. So I'm with you. I want to know where this money is going to go. Is it just going to go into the general fund and we'll use it as we need it? I mean, this is an industry that's struggling and we know that tobacco was probably the original commodity of the colonies of the state of Virginia.
Chair.
That's my argument.
I have a question here, administrator. Costs and staffing requirements associated with the administration of this tax are significant.
That is the reasoning why many localities are going to a regional implementation of this. And what I proposed, or at least set forth as a possibility, is for us to join the Northern. It wasn't Northern Neck, it's the Chesapeake Bay Regional Cigarette Tax Board. Which has delegated its duties of administering this tax for its localities to the Northern Neck PDC. And they would be taking 5% of the revenues off the top to implement the tax.
Who would?
The NNPDC. Northern Neck.
Where would that go?
That would be going.
Covering their administrative costs.
Yeah, that would be going to. Auditing, basically auditing and enforcement inspections, making sure sales are actually.
Is this list here that you have in here, is that the board pretty much?
Yes. The list in the actual proposal, the agreement.
So. So those localities have joined.
They.
I think it was Essex.
Westmoreland, Montrose, Warsaw, Lancaster, Middlesex and Urbana have all passed their ordinances agreeing to be part of this. Northern Neck group as well as. What's that?
Did you skip two of them?
No, Colonial Beach and Essex are considering it this week.
And a large number of those people travel Route 360 every day. These people in Westmoreland County that actually work, I think it's one in social services. I had an uncle and aunt that lived in Florida and every time that they would visit, they'd pay us now. This has been years ago. Every time they would visit the state of Virginia to visit their relatives, they stopped at south of the border and bought the maximum number of cartons of cigarettes that they could. And this, this is the effect that that I predicted would have on the business in this county. If especially if Hanover enacted, that's 100,000 plus people. I mean, Caroline County, probably 30,000 plus people. I just think it would be, it would, it would be good to look at this number and think of what the net gain would be to the potential of what it could mean to businesses here.
I propose we table this, let's assess what, this is brand new for the Virginia. Let's assess the impact for a few months, maybe longer, and then bring this back at a later date.
I would agree.
And could we?
Say what other counties are doing.
That's what I think, what other big counties are doing. Can we get the county administrator to talk with West Point and see where they're going? If we enact.
I spoke with them and they were following us.
Okay, I'd rather see it that way if we end up doing it.
Okay.
Then it probably eliminates some of that problem.
It sounds like. I was I was thinking maybe an incremental tax, but it sounds like we would not generate enough revenue to pay for somebody to manage the thing at that point.
Taking 5% off, but part of, we can do it that way, but part of being in a region is it makes it a lot easier to.
Right.
Enforce if everyone is doing, managing 10 different taxing regimes.
One more thing that we have to remember, the the Native American tribes are exempt from federal and state taxes on tobacco. The upper Mattapanai could easily, if they elected to do so, I think they just purchased a parcel on Route 30, not far from 360. They could have a tobacco store right there and and sell sell cigarettes, as we said here right now, drastically cheaper than any of the merchants in this county. So if this is enacted, they could do that. It would be a viable option for them.
Stuart, with that, you're already talking about what a dollar what in tax?
Federal government is already charging a dollar and one cent. The state of Virginia is charging 30. King William would be charging more than the state of Virginia.
If they could reduce the dollar 30, why would they sell them now?
If, you know, it gets to a point as when is it a viable option? Maybe right now it's not, maybe maybe the ethics, maybe, you know, ethically, maybe they're not in favor of it. It's it's not a matter of that. It's just a matter of, I think it could help local businesses. If all the surrounding counties do this. I I would certainly predict that people from the adjoining counties who cross into King William County and purchase cigarettes, if they could buy them four dollars a carton less, that's a lot.
It's it's one, I'm really torn on because of the health effects.
Well, you know, yeah, you know, it is such a thing as a as a choice too. They they've been almost taxed out of this country, you said earlier. You know, I worked for Philip Morris, they diversified, they split off the international group. And the majority of this cigarettes right now are international sales because of the way they've been treated in this country.
I I agree with you.
Right, yeah, I I'm fine with tabling it. I'm split on it because, you know, frankly, it it. Uh, I I think. There are plenty of advocates that would tell you that it's a regressive tax. Statistics certainly show that that smoking affects a lot of marginalized and impoverished communities that still still do. You know, smoke in large numbers and that, you know, and that tax on cigarettes tends to hit communities that can afford it the least the most. But it it's also, it's ironic because so many of us have been harping on this to the state of Virginia for so long. As a blatant example of of the inequally imposed state regulations that now that the opportunity is there, we would say, thanks, but no thanks. But I I'm I'm on the fence myself. So, yeah, I think maybe more care and study and and thought is due before we make a decision. So I'm fine with tabling it. We had a motion to table.
I'm gonna make a motion, we table this issue until. November. 2021.
What does that do, just a question, what does that do with this board?
They are going to start their board no matter what, so it's not going to affect that. It's purely, if we were to implement it, when would we start?
This membership, I I assume membership will remain open to us.
Correct.
Should we?
There's no reason to believe it would.
That's what it says under implementation, this agreement shall take effect upon the signature of only two of those jurisdictions. It's already what has passed and then anybody else that wants to take effect upon the signature, proper official of each jurisdiction can add on later, so.
Seems reasonable to me. All right, so we've got a motion to table and seconded, is there any discussion on it? Ms. Branch?
Mr. Barber?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hatches?
Hi.
Hi.
Going over the letter from VIPSA on curbside collection services, which we discussed at our last meeting.
Right, so just following up on that, Mr. Magnet of VIPSA discussed with me what our options are for curbside service. In order to, for the county to offer curbside service, we can't segment off just the housing communities and central garage. A bid would have to be put out for the entire county, which pretty much prices us out of being able to offer that service. That prices us out of offering that service. However. His suggestion is to. Negotiate or at least communicate with some of the larger. Curbside service, county waste. What was the other one? TFR. To talk to the HOAs, if not the individuals in those neighborhoods. And it is likely that they could come to some agreement. It would be worth their while to do curbside pickup in those neighborhoods. So he has already started talking to those companies and starting that process to see if. They see central garage as a viable option or a viable. Place to do business.
Mr. Hudgens, just a quick question, you're saying the. County can't do it, but couldn't we send out a survey? I'm sure a lot of people would pay for it themselves and I'd pay for a service to do it, but I'm just wondering.
Right, right, and that's basically what we're talking about is if we want to try to cover entire neighborhoods, those individual neighborhoods have to be the 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 ones that negotiate the deal because.
Right, that's what I meant, we need to reach out to more than just like McCauley Park, Kennington, those places. I'd send out something to everybody, if they live close to them, maybe you could get.
Right, right, the whole, yes.
Yeah, as long as you know, understand that you're a paying boy.
Together, right, right.
But it also makes sense for them, the trash companies, to make a deal with the HOA and the HOA collects it as part of their dues, then the company.
All right, that's one that was covered in that letter, as a single payer makes it a more attractive option. But there are companies and and county waste is one of them that will do individual curbside pickup, you know, you strike a deal with them. But I think to provide the service root large in a manner that what we're looking for here is to actually reduce the stress on that that complex at Route 30 right now. That's how we we roll that out in a in a way that actually have an impact.
Okay.
What are we doing with it, I'm sorry?
Uh, just FYI.
Just.
What's that?
What are we doing, any action?
Nothing, per year, motion only. And just to keep you up to date, he's waiting word back from county waste and setting up another meeting.
Those are the other company, it's kind of.
I didn't write it down.
Okay.
Probably Waste Management, maybe.
I know that he lives down on Green Level Road.
Oh, yes, I know that.
Two trucks.
Gentleman. He does service that area.
Comes up to my way. You know, I'm saying.
All right. Water Tower. Water Tower, just to bring you up to date. We are still looking, but we have proceeded with. Giving the go ahead to the engineers, consultants to do a preliminary engineering report. This is something that we would need to do no matter the location. And this is a study of. A potential tower and what it would, what the effects would be, it's hydraulics and it will also go into cost. It's going to look at six specific locations, many of which we've already discussed in meetings and price out the top three. So basically, they've already done a lot of the work associated with this. They just didn't bill us at the time, this is incorporated into this. It's anticipated, we, when we met, that the top three locations, top two would be. The well lot in Kennington. That works hydraulically now, would have space for a water tower, does not need any further growth before it hydraulically works in the system. And we're also pricing Manquin. Manquin's still high ground, it does not work hydraulically right now without growth. But with a certain amount of investment in maintenance and pumps, different infrastructure, we can make it work until there is growth. So that is the. Growth option and then there's the option that. Works right now.
Where's the Manquin location at?
It's a parcel that I had a map at one point. It's a parcel that straddles, that goes between Manfield Road and 360.
Manfield comes into 360.
At the. Right, but it it doesn't go where the post office is, it's behind that.
Behind that, okay. Clements.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you said this is all for hydraulics, is there no such thing as a forced water system? systems? What I'm hearing from a lot of my residents is that they just don't want to see another tower. It's not just that's that, but maybe a shorter tower like the Heaven and Rica in Chesterfield, it could be, is there a way that it can be forced out, or that's just way too costly back there?
Yeah, not what we're looking for.
People want to know, that's why, they said, why don't we bring it up to the public? Because they're all going, oh, no, we don't want another tower anyway.
Hydraulically, it, it needs to be at the same height as the other.
Use the argument that we can put fixed wireless antennas up there.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Right, by the time we don't need it anymore.
Well, you're still going to need mobile. That's the thing that's not-
Right.
Been really discussed. Fiber to the home is great, we still need some mobile access.
To get your personal- They say water towers absorb this signal greatly. I don't know.
They, they are wrong.
Anyway, okay. We'll just bring you up to date. Keep working on it. All right. All right, uh, gentlemen, requests for any future topics to be covered at work sessions. I know Mr. Garber still has, uh, outstanding requests for rate of tax collection and a update on Commerce Park.
Yeah, yes, we are, started moving on those.
Okay. Any additional requests? Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore's brain is fried up.
Fair enough. Uh, Mr. Hodges?
Really don't have it.
Okay.
Steven? Um, maybe want to go back in like we discussed previously about the, about the, uh, sites for trash? I, I noticed myself that people do come in there for Hanover and dump stuff, but like you said, I don't know where the decal's that expensive to have them for county residents so they can check and verify, but like I said, I think you have to have a personnel to look at them, and like I said, every time I go in there, I never see anybody look at- You had to have law enforcement, the people at the dump site. So I don't know if that, I mean, it's something maybe to talk about.
Well, sure, New Kent has a model that we can maybe look at.
Okay, that's all I'm, so enforcement, yeah, maybe suggest something like that.
Right, enforcement, and New Kent actually has a small decal that you affix to your windshield now, so that the attendants can see it. It's not as big or obtuse as the old county stickers, but it's pretty clearly, um, still identifiable as what it is, so the attendants can make a quick, hey, you don't have your decal.
What it's worth, that part, I, I, Stuart, it seems like it's improved since Mr. Magnet was here. The, the, the bins have been accessible, they-
You know, it's, it, it all is dependent on when you go there, weekends, or if you, if you're unfortunate enough that they are transferring the container.
Right.
Depending on who's moving it, that could be, uh, like pulling teeth.
Well, that's another thing that, and I did mention, uh, the central garage has been awful, and I said, I've had off the side of the road on thirty, maybe we could get VDOT to put a turn lane in there, because like I said, some people almost hit me, and I said, I'm not the only one, there, it's back to the school lot sometimes, so that's all I'm saying. It's no glares to turn off, and people zip by there and just, when you have to wait, it's, it's because of the layout of it.
It's a high traffic area.
Yeah, yalls are like pull-throughs, like the one up at a, at a halls, that's great, you can just go through, it's easy, and you can get out. This one, you get out back, people bring trailers, and they can't figure out how to back them, and they back up the whole things. Just something temporary.
That should be a licensure endorsement anyways, right? Like, a trailer endorsement.
You don't see me back up a trailer, you don't see some.
Okay, so, um, yes, because we did, uh, you know, acquire land there to expand that site, but that ultimately was not viable. Um, so I guess continued discussions about possible alternative locations, relocations.
Right.
Um, my outstanding one, we got a little bit of info on, but it's discussion of the reserve fund, but I know there's work that needs to be done in the treasurer's office before we can, uh, discuss that in much more detail, so, um, I think, I think that covers me for now.
Can I throw one more thing?
Sure.
Other thing that Karina brought up about, that we never came up with any ordinances for the disabled people, and like I said, I, the one, I outfor it to all y'all, uh, one of my constituents needed just disabled discount for their real estate, and had something with Sally, I don't know if you've been involved with it or not, but she was promised something with some kind of letter, and Karina said she can't do it, but she thought it was the closed session, that we could maybe look into that to see if maybe we need to create an ordinance to help people with disabilities or things like that for discounts. I don't know. Closed it? I don't recall talking about that. But is it, is it open?
Yeah.
She mentioned, you know, she said so, so much she talks about.
We had something to consider on the regular meeting on that.
And then I got another email, they said that when it was brought to the board, I said, well, it really wasn't, we were just discussing that we don't have any ordinances in place to address that.
Sounds like we're, we're taking care of it later this month.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, so we do have a closed meeting? So we got that motion?
Oh. Mr. Chairman, in accordance with section two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting to consider a personal matter involving the interview of a prospective candidate for employment.
Okay. Seconded any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Aye. We'll be back hopefully soon. All right, can I get a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Branch?
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Aye, can I get a motion to approve SR one?
So moved, second.
Discussion, Ms. Branch?
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We've seconded, Ms. Branch.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Aye.